Okay. So we'll begin this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, November 28, 2018, at 6:30 PM. And I guess if you'll all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So go right into the public hearing. The Groveland Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing. This one. Open the public meeting. Okay, so we need a roll call vote to open the public hearing. So I will start at this end of the table. Selectman Watson?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Wood?
Yes.
And Selectman O'Neil is also in the affirmative. So the Groveland Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 28, 2018, at 6:30 PM. It's on all 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass. On the application for transfer of an annual wines and malt beverages liquor license from SBAP Ram Corporation, DBA Jerry's Variety, 15 Elm Park, Groveland, Mass., to Heath... To Lick... To Lack Corporation, I'm sorry if I'm butchering that name, does business as Jerry's Variety, 15 Elm Park, Groveland, Mass. Hardy Patel is the proposed manager. Do I need to read the rest as well? Okay, description of premises, 15 Elm Park, two-story building with store on first floor, approximately 700 square feet, one entrance and exit. Then turn the floor over to... Okay.
So I want you to invite him on.
Attorney Maradian?
Maradian.
Maradian will speak on behalf of his client.
Good evening. My name is Attorney John Maradian, the Magnus Law offices. And first I want to thank you for the special meeting accommodating our application. Tonight, I represent Heath Tullak Corporation. With me is Hardy Patel, and he is the sole officer, director, and owner of the corporation. Tonight, we're seeking a transfer of the liquor license to Heath Tullak Corporation, approval of Hardy Patel here as manager of record, and a pledge of the license to SBAP Ram Corporation as security for a loan that's going back, delta with the financing of the purchase. Hardy is buying the business. It's a straightforward deal. He's experienced in alcohol retail sales. He's worked at his mom's store, Whitman Convenience, and is familiar with those regulations. He's in the process of getting tip certified, to be certified for alcohol sales. There's no change to the physical layout. It's gonna be the same business as it is now. With that, I'll ask any questions you guys may have.
Well, I guess if you're done, we'll open it up to public comment. If anybody wishes to speak on behalf or against. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, could you walk through the timeline of what happened with the application that it didn't meet liquor applications that we had before? Was that what happened with this?
No.
Was this just in between what happened?
It was just in between meetings. So when we got the... Because you have to advertise the newspaper now 14 days, we missed the last, the Veterans' Day meeting, if you will, and then we didn't have another meeting because of town meeting. So it was just timing wise when the application came in.
Okay, so it wasn't late to go to the last meeting. It was in between the timeframe?
Just because of advertising, yes.
No, okay.
Selectman Dunn?
Yeah, so you said that he is gonna get certified for alcohol sales?
Yep.
Will that before he takes over the business?
Yep.
Will he be certified?
Before he issued a license, he'll present a...
Okay.
Give you a printout certificate.
Right, right. And there'll be no changes to the business as in like the... Any product change or nothing like that?
Sole beer and wine. It's not... No liquor is there. He's still selling, you know, keeping store items too.
Right. I know a couple of stores in Groveland are starting to sell a lot of the tobacco and the...
Juuls.
Pipes and stuff like that. I just didn't know if he was planning on getting into all that like everybody else is.
Is that there now? I don't know.
No, which doesn't keep this name. Okay. All right. And that's the only I have.
Selectman Watson?
The only question I had is that reading through some of the paperwork here, there was... There was a section about if he sold subs or prepared foods. You're probably gonna have me to try to find that, right?
I don't see why they're...
I'll find that. That it was... I think it had to do with utilities.
For water.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, the purchase agreement?
Yeah, number nine here on the back page. Water and sewer charge for the property unless the licensee sells frozen yogurt or otherwise expands the business such as operation of a deli, in which event the licensee shall pay a greater percentage of the water. Was that gonna be a possibility, you do a deli?
Maybe sometimes in the future. Depends on how the business goes, because I'm gonna be new to the area, to the business and all that, so that's potential for the future.
Okay. Yeah, and what that means is if he, you know, he does, he'll... If he does go for a deli, he'll have to come back for a common fixtures license and stuff like that. But that means he'll pay on the lease a higher percentage of the...
Yeah, when I just saw the deli, it's a question. That's all I have. Thank you.
You continue to sell tobacco products?
Yes.
And you'll... You have safeguards in place to ensure that these tobacco and alcohol products don't end up in the hands of the minors?
No, no, no. They're a safe place and safety for... We have... Do have a closet and stuff that's always locked up.
Okay. So the questions I have.
Same hours operation and everything?
Uh, yes. Pretty much.
So there's no other questions?
So I'll make a motion. I'm gonna read this. Motion to approve transfer of annual wines and malt beverage liquor license from SBAP Ram Corporation doing business as Jerry's Variety, 15 Elm Park, Groveland, Mass., to... Heath Tullak?
Hay Tullak.
Hay Tullak?
Yes.
Sorry. Hay Tullak Corporation doing business as Jerry's Variety, 15 Elm Park, Groveland, Mass. Hardy Patel is the proposed manager, subject to approval of Alcohol... Alcoholic Beverage Control Commissions of Boston, Mass.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, we'll have a roll call vote. Selectman Watson?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Wood?
Yes.
Selectman O'Neil is also in the affirmative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, motion to close public hearing. Require a roll call. Again, correct?
Yes.
Selectman Watson?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Wood?
Yes.
And Selectman O'Neil is also in the affirmative.
It's in the packet that I sent.
What's this one?
No, the packet that I gave you guys in the night.
Is it at the end?
Uh, right bef... Right before that. There you go. So the next public hearing is for 6:45. If all parties are here, you could certainly... It's not a... This is not a published public hearing. It's just for the parties that are involved. So you're welcome to open if all the parties are here.
I'm not sure all the parties are here. Are all the parties here?
Well, I would assume so.
I guess all the parties are here, so...
We're here.
I guess we'll call the meeting to order. Any special protocol?
So it's still a public hearing, so you still need to do the roll call votes.
So in accordance with Mass. General law chapter 140, section 147, the board will conduct a public hearing on a dog nuisance complaint. The complaint was filed against Cosby, interior mix owner Timothy O'Connor, 269 Center Street, Groveland. Require a roll call vote. Selectman Watson?
Yes.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Wood?
Yes.
And I'm also in the affirmative. So we will need to...
So I would recommend bringing the police department in first, as they're the ones that filed the complaint. So you should bring them up and swear him in accordingly.
Okay. Officer Donald?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant. I wanted to call him general, but I wasn't sure. The chief might get upset. So I guess we need to take an oath here. So if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony to be given in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. So I guess fill us in on the complaint.
This is actually... Was originally filed by the ACO, Steven Sargent. He's at FEMA training out of state, so I'm here representing him and the police department on this matter. So unsure of where to begin. Should I just begin with the history of it?
Maybe that'd be best, just so we can all get up to speed, whoever's not.
So on September 21, 2016, the police department got a call from Amtrak Valley Hospital reporting a dog bite. We responded up to the hospital, took a report from a victim who was a... Who said he was a hired contractor for 269 Center Street. And the dog at 269 Center Street was on a chain and broke free of the chain and jumped up and bit him and required 16 stitches. So the dog was put into quarantine per law after a dog bite event. At the time, Steve Sargent was not the ACO back then. We were in a transition phase between ACOs. So on the 26th of September, one of our officers was delivering the quarantine notice to the dog, well, to the family. And the dog came out of, I believe in the report says the garage area, and jumped up and bit the officer on the arm. The officer was treated at Lawrence General, minor injury. He was out of work for a couple of days, not nothing much. So then...
These two events happened on the same day?
Five days apart. Five days apart.
So September 26th and September 21st?
First was the original dog bite, yes. So on December 25th of that year, 2016, the residents of 269, they... And it was apparently found the next day by a resident at 3 Amber Lane and had been in some sort of scrape or fight with either a wild animal or another dog. Some injuries on the dog owned by 269 Center. The dog was put into quarantine. I'm not entirely familiar with the ACO rules, but if it's a bite or a fight with an unknown animal, the quarantine is 45 days rather than 10, because you... I guess for the obvious reason, you just don't know exactly what the dog got into. So then skipping ahead to the 21st of October of this year, 2018, the dog ran off the property at 269 Center Street and bit a dog that was being walked by a woman on a leash on Center Street as she was walking by the house. She went immediately to, I think it was Bulger Animal Hospital, and the dog was treated. And the dog owned by 269 Center Street was again put into quarantine. And after some discussion, it was decided to bring the dog here for a hearing. After biting two people and then a dog, we feel that something needs to be done as ordered by the board for, you know, under the authority that you have to deal with a nuisance dog.
Thank you. Any questions from the lieutenant? Selectman Watson?
Wait, just one question. You said the officer was out of work for three, four days?
Yeah, it was a... It was a couple of days. I don't remember how long. It was just a couple of days.
Did the... Did the town get reimbursed from the owner of the dog for the officer's time off?
That...
Maybe that's something that we might look at at some point here, that certainly they should have to compensate the town for his time off. But we'll... Maybe we can use that as a condition at the end, but we'll... Where do I hear from the other people before I make comments?
Selectman Dunn?
You must have had conversation with the animal control officer?
Yes.
Is it his opinion that the dog is or could be kennelled or a different situation for the dog? Or is it a situation where he thinks the dog's completely out of control?
He... I'm talking to Officer Sargent. There were... He showed me the list of options the Board of Selectmen have in dealing with a dog. And one of the recommendations that he would make is that the dog is on a leash at all times when outside and muzzled, went off the property.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Wood?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. How old is the dog?
It's in here somewhere. I'd have to find it.
I think about 11. I think about 11.
Twelve years old.
Twelve years old.
Okay. Is there a fence in the yard now?
I don't believe there's a fence. I don't know about an electric fence, but I don't believe...
That's the next... So we don't know if there's an electric collar available currently?
I don't know.
Do you know if there's a dog run?
I don't know that either.
Okay. This might be questions for the actual owners, so... So I'll wait.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you for your testimony. I guess we'll have the complaintant now testify? So if we could have that woman come forward?
No, he's the respondent, so, yes.
And if you wouldn't mind raising your right hand. Do you swear to or affirm that the testimony to be given in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
Sorry. Can you have her state her name, please, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. My name's Sharon Piradi.
And address, please?
22 Garrison Street.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. You're not the dog owner?
No.
No, that's who they're looking for, is the dog owner this time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My contact is me, so...
Yes, no, I think... I think we're not sure whose, yes.
You're the dog.
We didn't come with name tags.
He'll get to you.
Other than the officer in uniform, he was the only one that I could really figure out. Great. Yes, if you could raise your right hand. And do you swear or affirm that testimony to be given in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, if you could state your name and your address, appreciate it.
Timothy Michael O'Connor, 269 Center Street, Groveland, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Selectman Wood?
Yes. Do you have a... You don't have a fence in the yard?
No.
Okay. And you don't have a dog run?
I have a 30-foot lead that the dog's tied to when he's outside.
Is that the same lead that was broken before?
It was never broken.
Okay. Who watches the dog during the day?
During the day?
Yeah.
Dog's inside during the day. He doesn't go out.
So he's not outside unless he escapes by himself?
If you ask the questions, I can answer them if you want. But basically going... Do you want to go back from the beginning or...
Just in general?
In general, the dog is never off leash unless a child opens the door and the garage is open and the dog gets out. Eight, two-year-old son, two and a half. But the dog is always tied to a lead. He's never off leash outside.
So the dog is either housed inside, tied to a lead, or on a leash when someone's there?
Yes, and it's always me walking the dog.
And outside of that, the dog has escaped two or three times, correct?
He's escaped once on Christmas Eve.
Yep.
We lost him, and then we found him, I think, a day and a half later, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
On Amber Lane, the police found him. And then the other time was on the date in question at hand when he attacked the other dog.
Yeah. Okay.
And the garage door was open. He... I was playing cannonball with two kids, and the third one was a baby, opened the door, and he went outside, and that's when the incident happened.
And how is the dog with your kids?
Perfect.
So do you think...
He is protective of the kids. I mean, I would not...
I can understand.
I wouldn't want to walk through my front door with him there. But he's fine. I've raised a six-year-old, a four-year-old, a two-year-old, and he sleeps in the bed, and he's great. I've had other dogs from the neighborhood come into my yard, and he's been tied up and no problem.
He's 12 years old, and how much does he weigh, roughly?
He's anywhere between 11 and 12. We rescued him from the MSPCA. He's anywhere between 68 to 72 pounds. He's a big dog.
And how long have you had him?
I've had him for 10 years.
That's it for now.
That's it?
For now.
Selectman Dunn?
So we've had these situations here before. And we had one not too long ago. Same situation you're having. The owner, dog is perfectly fine with his family. Certain animals would come in the yard perfectly fine. What would happen is the dog, the door would be left open, the kid would let the dog gets out and causes him headaches. So the shot along of it was, we had the hearing. No one wants to have these hearings, especially with town people. But I asked at the time, can you fence the dog in? Or could you put a run for the dog? That's still not gonna cure the problem of that dog getting out. You know, if the dog gets out, the door gets open, the dog gets out. What can you do? You know what I mean? But I don't know how to cure that end of it. But the outside end of it would be, if you could do a dog runner or do something to secure the dog when he's out?
I mean, he's... He is tied to a 30-foot heavy lead. He's on a choker. I mean, I've been here four and a half years, and I've never had really an issue, except recently. I don't know what else to do. Fencing in that yard, it's over an acre of land, I just... I've looked into it, to be honest with you, because I've had dogs my whole life. I've had big dogs. It's financially just not feasible to do right now at this point in my life. So he's at the lead. He's on the lead, and I haven't deal with... I'm at the point, I don't even really walk him anymore, really, to tell you the truth. I keep him on my own property, because I just don't want to run the risk. Because obviously, you know, previous incidents, there's insurance involved, and attorneys involved. There's a whole hodgepodge stuff going on.
So do you have any... Do you have any kind of like a protocol that you can put in place where the dog... If the dog gets... I mean, kids are kids. They're young. They don't get...
I think I need to be more diligent of closing my garage doors. Because that's what happens. I pull in, I walk in the house, through the garage, and my wife's with three kids. I'll take the dog outside, so it's just pretty much sudden as I go. So that's on me to close the garage doors more. That day, I came home, and two of the three were playing board game. They asked me to play. Sat down, waited for three, four minutes, and within 10 minutes, someone was knocking on my door, holding my dog. And I was like, ah, I didn't even know he was outside, to be honest with you. Until the first one back.
It sounds like there's gotta be something put in place where the dog just doesn't get out of the house, I mean, freely that way, however...
I'm open to suggestions, gentlemen. I don't know what else to do. I mean...
Well, I know the gentleman that was in town, he had to put the dog into a room into his house, a basement or something like that. He was gonna put the dog down there and keep the dog in his basement on certain times when he knew the kids were coming in out of the house, and the house was gonna be open at most times, so... I mean, I don't think we heard from him again since that...
That was four years ago.
Yeah.
I'm open for the suggestion. I don't know how...
If you know you're coming home at five, six o'clock every day in a certain time, make sure the dog's down in the basement, then the dog can't escape. I mean, if it's your kids, open the door, the young kids, yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
You know, and what are you gonna do? But I mean...
Can I interrupt one second?
Sure, I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't want to interrupt. Do you know if when the dog got out, it's always gotten out through the garage? Has that been the normal thing? When it has escaped, it's gone through the garage? Or has there been other issues?
Well, he's been out... He's only gone out twice. And once was on Christmas Eve when, I don't know where 269 is, but the conservation land's there, he heard something and he bolted. And he ran into the woods, and I just couldn't find him.
But how did he get out?
Because I... How did he get out? Because I was walking him in my backyard.
So he got away from you in the backyard?
He got away from me. He heard something in the woods.
Yeah.
Cut through Amber Lane and went flying through in that conservation land, and then they found him a few days later.
So to me, it sounds like there's steps that need to be taken in place, like if it's the garage thing, maybe you... When you come home, we don't come in the garage right away. You pull up to the garage, and then you go inside and make sure everything's okay, and then when the dog settles down, when you get home, and I know they get excited when you come home. And then maybe you pull in the garage. Maybe that's a step. And then step two would be, when you're out walking, you get either a stronger leash or a heavier duty leash or something that the dog can't get away from you, because that'll satisfy that second escape that happened.
Second escape.
One, he escaped from the garage, one, he escaped from you, walking in the backyard, correct?
The first time on Christmas, he was... I never want to leave. He was beside me. It was like 1:30 in the morning. So I just brought him out back through my backyard. And he was walking around my backyard.
Yeah.
He's doing his business, because he always listens to me usually 90% of the time. He heard something. He bolted. Boom. The next time, the kids open the garage.
Okay.
And that's the second time.
So unfortunately, we're talking about the 10% of the time where we have to rectify. So if that's the case, there are... It sounds to me like there's steps that can be taken to mitigate the risk to other people. They just have to be followed, because nobody wants to go down this list of options we have, especially option seven, which is euthanasia. Nobody wants to get to that point. I don't want to get to that point. So there's things that can be done, it's just, one, you have to put them in place, and two, you have to be diligent. Sorry about that.
All right. So I think Mike said it more clearly. So, I think Mike said it more clearly, and the only, my only thing was this, you know, to satisfy the police, if he's outside the house, mu, have him muzzled. I mean, if you, if you're walking him, have him muzzled, if he gets loose, you know he's muzzled, you know what I mean? Um, you're going to satisfy the police, they're asking for it, satisfy them. I get what you're saying, I know your yard, it's huge, I get, you can't fence the yard, but maybe if you have him on a heavy chain, and the chain's not the issue, he's not breaking the chain, that's not the issue, it's...
It's the garage, it's the...
Right.
It's the ten percent he's not listening to you, because there's a deer in the woods or something.
Yeah.
Like I say, and like Mike says, and everyone else, we don't want to be mean, we don't want to, but we also have to protect the town people, and, you know, the, the police, you know, their resources going in and out and dealing with it, you know what I mean? So i, it sounds like it's all doable, right? It's a little bit changing on your behalf, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, and like I say, if you need to go in the garage, if you put him down in the basement, then you go get him when you come home from work, and they come on up, buddy, you know, the door's closed. So my only would be, if, if he's outside the house, to have him muzzled, i, i, if you're going to have him out, and that's, you know, try to do what you can do to change the ins, inside habits. Okay.
What's that? Selectman Watson?
You know, you mentioned Christmas Eve, none of these three complaints on Christmas Eve, I'd like you to address each one of these and explain what happened, and, um, in, in all three instances, none of them were, none of these that we have in front of us, nothing occurred on Christmas Eve. Explain what happened, uh, with the, the woman that was walking the dog by the house and the dog got out. And reading, reading from the paperwork, uh, that sounds to me like the dog, uh, at some point went around and was, was on the street side. The dog was clearly, clearly out of your yard. Maybe you can explain what happened in all three incidences, and then I'd like to listen to the, to the woman that, uh, before I make any other comments.
You want all three incidents?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
E, e, each one, each one separately, if you would.
First one, with, with the dog bite, and September, the dog was tied to a lead, my wife was outside on the adder-out, my, adder-on dog chairs, nursing my brand-new, one-month-old baby, with my daughter there, the dog was tied to the lead. The worker came around out back, my wife said, "Do not go near the dog," he's like, "He's not going to bother me, don't worry about it," my wife goes, "Do not come near the dog." The person ignored my wife, kept walking, and then the dog did not break from the lead, he le, le, lunged forward towards the individual and bit him. After numerous complaints, I've not, numerous cases of saying, "Do not come forward." So that's the first one. Second one, with the police officer serving the quarantine notice, allegedly, the dog jumped up, uh, and supposedly the same bit, some say he might have jumped and scratched, I don't know, I wasn't there, my wife was there, but it was minor, but the insurance claim was filed rather quickly by the police officer, and I know that there was something taken care of on assurances on that end. And on the third one, the most recent one, I was home, my child, my youngest, two-and-a-half, opened the door, when I was with the other two, and the dog got out, and unfortunately attacked another smaller dog. At the bottom of driveway slash street, between, I would say right on the bottom of driveway from what I could tell. Those were the three incidents.
Commenting on the, on the first incident, uh, the contractor doing work at your house, according to the statement we have, he was, he was going to retrieve from a, a tool from his truck, though, was his truck packed, parked in the back of your property?
The truck was parked in the front, the, there's a lot of insurance and legal issues here, so I go, the, the, the truck, the company was told not to park in certain spots, it was their last day, they were trying to get out quickly.
What, what was that again?
The company was trying, it was the last day of their work in my basement, they were doing a bit of work. The company was told not to park in a certain spot, so I could tie my dog to my lead, and the dog was, would not be an issue. They did not heed my advice, I went to work, they parked in a spot. My wife, who was outside nursing my baby boy, who just came back after forty-five days of children's, and my daughter were there, my son was at school, the worker came out back, my wife told the individual, "Do not come any closer, the dog is tied to a lead, he's near your truck," and the worker said, something along the lines, "He's not going to bite me, don't worry about it, because he's been here before." Well, leaning towards my wife, and the dog bit the individual. That's the incident. But he was tied to a lead, and the individual was told not to proceed forward, and yet he did.
Received sixteen stitches. It was a pit bull type dog, which was...
Terry mix, please.
Which was on a train, on a chain tied to a tree by his work truck, and, and it was blocking out, uh... Okay, uh, the officer, explain that one? It was, it was, he was walking up to the house to, to serve a, a dog come out of the garage?
Served the quarantine notice, and the garage door was open, my wife opened the door, and she went to go put the dog in the garage, and the garage door was open, and allegedly, supposedly, the dog came around and jumped on the officer, and whether he bit or clawed, no one could really tell me, but a claim was filed by the police.
Okay, how about the other one?
And the third one, my child opened the, the door, the garage door was open, the dog got out, and unfortunately attacked the smaller dog.
Okay. I don't have any others right now, but I'll, after we hear from, uh, from the dog owner, the dog will be tagged, I mean, maybe I'll have other questions, but right now, we don't have any others.
I reserve my questions, but I do have a comment, I know an acre is an awful lot, it's hard to fence that in. Is there a, um, smaller area that you could fence in, um, that would give the dog adequate exercise room and, but provide the security and protection that, you know, I'm kind of looking for?
I, I, I don't know, if you saw my, you saw my property, it's, it's, it's roll, it is hit, it's, it's, I've looked into it, it's, it's a, it's a large quantity of money to fence in, even just a portion of it. I thought about just doing the size, and then fencing it in the back with the, what property line is, but that's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars.
What about just a twelve-by-twelve, or fifteen-by-fifteen chain link kennel?
I'm hoping not to go there, I, I, I don't, I, I, he's not out that, he's not outside enough, in my opinion.
Is an electric barrier kind of thing?
He'll go right through it, he's, he's a bully breed, they're big dogs, they go right through them. I mean, the Labrador in the, out of Amber Lane comes to my yard all the time, goes right through his, so, thirty-pound Labrador's going to go through it, my seventy-pound Terry mix is going to go through it.
Okay. Thank you, sir, I appreciate your testimony here today. If we could now hear from the respondent?
No, 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 he's, he's the respondent.
Oh.
So she's the witness.
Okay.
She is the witness.
Get this right eventually. Please, go forward. And we might have done this once before, but let's do it again, just in case. Uh, please raise your right hand, and do you swear or affirm that testimony be given in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, if you would state your name and address?
Sharon Parati, twenty-two Garrison Street.
Terrific. Selectman Watson, we'll begin questioning with you, well, I'll let you have a statement.
I'd like to hear her, her story, so...
Okay, so I was just walking out, walking my two dogs, and we just came around the corner, and we were in front of his house, and the dog just came barreling down the driveway, and I, he was kind of circling, I had two dogs with me, a bigger dog and a smaller dog, and he was kind of circling in between them, and then I was trying to kind of walk on, and I, and I realized he was starting to follow us, so I just said, "Go home, go home, go home," and then all of a sudden, he just realized, I don't know, saw my small dog, and just kind of lunged onto the small dog. And I couldn't do anything, I was yelling for someone to come out and help me, because I, I could not get the dog off of my dog. So, um, people came by, they happened to be driving by, and they got out and helped me, and then I just took the dog to the dog hospital.
This is on the twenty-second of October?
I think that's when it was, yeah.
And this is in the afternoon, about twelve-thirty? Twelve-thirty hours?
I think it was later on in the day, it was after the Patriots game, whatever time that was on that day. Yeah, you're looking at the follow-up, it happened at nineteen fifty-two hours, so seven fifty-two.
Yep. On the twenty-first. Anything else you want to add?
No, no, I mean, I'm a dog owner, I get it, dogs get out, um, I, I just, was actually just looking to be reimbursed for the fees that I incurred at the veterinary hospital, and, you know, having the dog muzzled seems like a okay solution, I mean, I, I, I know dogs get out of yards, that's what they do, but...
Are the fees, are there, are the veterinary bills in here? I didn't see them.
No, I have them.
What are those amount to, roughly?
About three hundred dollars.
Was the dog seriously injured?
Um, he had some puncture wounds that they had to take care of and kind of shave around his neck, but mostly puncture wounds, and then rabies vaccination, too, because we just weren't sure of, well, I guess that's standard procedure, right?
Stitches?
Uh, no, no stitches.
Selectman Watson, you have any questions?
Yeah, you, you weren't reimbursed for the...
No, but I haven't given him a bill or anything like that, so...
Wow. So what do you, what do you have for insurance on the dog? Do you, do you have a, do you have a particular insurance on the dog itself?
On the dog itself, no. Okay. Finding insurance on the bully breed dog is almost impossible. I've exhausted all options since, since the first dog bite, it's, uh...
Well, uh, I, I don't see how, how we could say if the dog is, is outside the house, it has to be muzzled, because if it, if somebody opens the door, lets the dog out, obviously it's not going to be muzzled. And so that, to me, uh, that's, that part is not enforceable. With these three incidences, perhaps, if the, even if the dog was muzzled, uh, I'm sorry, backtrack. If someone, one of the kids leaves the door open, lets the dog run out, the dog not going to be muzzled, this could happen, this could happen again. Somebody just walking by, they should be able to walk, but walk their dog by the house without fear of the dog accidentally getting out of the house, I know this has happened in, in other places. But based upon what I read here in the chapter one forty, uh, nuisance of dangerous dog, uh, auto for medial action, we could, we could, uh, require, uh, says here, not less than a hundred thousand dollars, uh, uh, the owner, owner-keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance of an amount not, not less than one hundred thousand dollars, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim loss, damage, et cetera, et cetera. So it, it looks like that's within our, uh, our jurisdiction to, uh, to order additional insurance on the dog, uh, and I'm going to certainly recommend that, and, uh, but I, I don't know about, about the, the dog. To me, the dog ought to be muzzled, even if it's inside the house, if there's a chance that the kids can let the dog out. I know that seems, sounds ridiculous, but how are you going to prevent the kids from, from opening the door, or the dog just running outside? And the same thing with you, when you said you were, uh, you were out back walking the dog, and the dog broke loose and ran out into the woods, chasing some animal. Well, if, obviously, uh, if you're walking the dog on a leash, and the dog takes off, you're not going to be out back at your house with a, with a dog with a muzzle, I, I, it's, I, I, I don't know, uh, I don't know what to do with this, but, uh, she certainly should be re, she certainly should be reimbursed for the injuries to, to her dog, and the town of Groveland should reimburse for the, the injury time that the police officer was off-duty.
But there's insurance claim filed, is it paid?
Was that, was that for his off-duty time, or was that for, uh, insurance where he went to the hospital, probably when he went to the hospital?
Yeah, you, just to, do you have any questions of the witness right now, we can bring the, the dog owner up?
I don't have, uh, not right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Selectman Dunn?
Uh, no, I just basically, did you fear that the dog would come at you, or strictly you, you could, the dog was after the dog?
The dog was after the dog.
Right. And, and yard demands of getaway screaming, the dog didn't even, it didn't face the dog?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Wood?
Um, yeah, as far as the, the dog breaking loose, uh, taking off for the day, the dog owner already said he didn't break loose, he wasn't, wasn't on a leash, um, so it didn't break loose, it was a question of the dog not listening to ten percent of the time, that good-trained dogs don't listen. I agree that, um, at a minimum, the dog owner should pay the vet bill, the three hundred dollars. Muzzling, I think it comes down to a, a, a change in how you operate your house, really, it comes down to it.
I have questions for her.
No, I thought she was leaving, sorry.
No, we're still, we're still with her.
No questions. Sorry.
Okay. So yet, Mr. O'Connor, if you could come back up? I don't own a dog, um, don't own any pets, but I, I, I get it, they become part of the family, um, but I guess the, the main thing is we need to find a way that, uh, you can be happy and we can keep everybody safe, so I don't know what that solution is, if I knew that, I'd have a lot more money than I do now, and I'd help you by the fence. So, um, Selectman Watson, do you have...
Well, I, I concur with, uh, Selectman Wood, that, uh, in a minimum, the, uh, the owner of the dog should be reimbursed for the, uh, vet bills. What do you see as a remedy? Do you see a, a muzzling of the dog, uh, at, at all times?
No, I don't think so.
For sure?
I personally think having talked about it, that's just going to make, makes them more aggressive, personally, uh, I don't think that's necessary, uh, I don't see the need for it, honestly. I think it's just, as Mr. Wood points out, changing some of the, uh, structures of when I come home, maybe with the garage, it seems like the garage is the issue.
I don't, I don't think it's just you, though, I think it's your whole family and how they operate the exits and the entrances to the house, I think everybody needs to understand that. We need to know where the dog is before we open the door, we need to know where the dog is before we...
And we, we've worked on that, you know, but we still have a six, a four, or two-and-a-half year.
Oh, I get it, no, I know.
It's not fourteen, twelve, and ten here, it's, and, you know...
Doesn't get any better.
I know, it doesn't. So, we're doing the best we can.
Right.
That's all I can say.
I'm also, I'm also going to rec, make a recommendation at some point, that, uh, we require to have, uh, insurance on the dog, in case this happens again.
I've looked into it, no one will insure the bully breed dogs, that's the problem I'm having.
Well, then it's, that's not our problem, sir.
Then, what do you recommend I do then, sir?
If we require, if we require the dog to have additional insurance to protect, uh, citizens or, uh, people walking the dog, that's our prerogative, and it's up to you to find it, not us, it's up to you to find that, if we, if we require that. I don't have anything further.
Selectman Dunn?
So I'll go back to the part about the dog muzzling, I wasn't trying to say muzzle the dog twenty-four-seven, what I was saying, basically to protect you, if you take the dog out of your house, in your statement, you said the dog got away and went up Amber Lane, et cetera, et cetera, if the dog was muzzled, at least if the dog got away, it's protecting you from the dog biting anyone, you know what I'm trying to say? biting anyone, you know what I'm trying to say? I wasn't trying to be cruel, I wasn't trying to be mean. If the dog's outside the house, you, you got him muzzled, God forbid he gets away, at least you know he's not going to run down the end of the driveway and bite someone. That was my point about muzzling, I wasn't trying to be cruel or mean. The other thing is, my suggestion, it's only my suggestion to you, maybe throw up some, you know, beware of dog signs on your property, let people know down at the road or whatever, that you have an aggressive dog. And it sounds to me like you do have an aggressive dog, I think you kind of alluded that you do have an aggressive dog. So then we go back to saying, okay, the dog got out of the house, we got to change our ways of how we operate our home, like Mike said, we'll just, you come in at night, don't open the garage door. I understand your kids are young and you can't control that, so all I can say is, it's figure it out, I mean, I don't know what to say, I mean, whatever you can do to figure it out, you know what I mean? I hate to see these kind of hearings and what have you when someone's dog got injured and what have you, I don't, I'm sure you don't like it either, you don't want to be, want to be sitting here. So if you can change the house, that'd be great, and, you know, what would I get to say?
Wood, anything further?
Doesn't, doesn't your homeowner's policy cover your house and pets?
Not after the first one.
So they, they removed the dog portion of it? Because I know my house, my homeowner's policy has a dog provision in there.
Yeah.
So after that first incident happened, they removed that.
And I cannot find insurance anywhere. And I've tried.
Yeah.
Everywhere, Lord's lung, you name it, I've tried it. And insurance brokers and, so.
Short of finding other insurance options, I think it is on you to change the behavior of your household to make sure that the dog is within your confines, not 90% of the time, 100% of the time. And as Selectman Dunn said, if you're going to take him outside for walks, he's muzzled, if you're going to take him out at 1:00 in the morning to go pee or whatever, that he's on a leash so he can't get, you know, because that 10% of the time is really what we're talking about.
Yep.
And it's unfortunate that that's where we're at, but we have to make provisions that, like everyone else has said, that we're protecting you and we're protecting other people walking by. And when the dog doesn't listen that 10% of the time and takes off, we don't know what is tussling with out in the woods. So I think that that's part of what my advice is going to be, muzzle one outside, leased one outside, got to come up with a policy or a system to change the, the access points to the house.
It, it, it's difficult. I mean, I've got four children of my own, it doesn't get any easier, they don't listen And I, I, I see the recommendation of the ACO, dog muzzled at all times or off the property, but it seems that that's not going to, may not cure the, the issue. It's when the dog gets loose, when someone leaves a door open, then there's no control, there's, there's no premeditation about, okay, I'm going to put a muzzle on the dog because I know I'm going to take him out. It, it, it happens and then it's reactionary at that point. There's, there's no possibility that you could build a pen or something to, 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 you know, there's, there's options and there's some of these I, I hate, I mean, I just despise. But one of the options that, you know, we can enforce is you need to secure the dog in some kind of pen. I mean, like I said, I, I know they become part of the family. You don't want to see anything happen to the dog, I'm sure your children just love the dog. But somehow we've got to control it 100% of the time. You know, even 99% just isn't enough because that 1% chance, you know, something even worse could happen and that's, you know, we'd all feel terrible at that point, I'm sure you would too. So, I mean, what can you do? What, you know, beyond what Selectman Wood has said, trying to get, change behavior in the house, we know that's not going to happen overnight. What do you have for an immediate remedy to, to make sure that this is eliminated?
The only thing I can assure you is that I can muzzle him on the outside right now. Financially doing anything else is just not an option right now for me. So I don't know what else, you can't get blood from a stone, you know, I'll muzzle him, I'll tie him to the lead, I mean, he never, I don't even walk him anymore, I mean, that's all I can tell you I can do, so.
Yeah, and it seems like when you're home, that, that's, it's not an issue, it seems like you have control, but when you're not home, that's when children will be children, they leave doors open, things happen, and then it's, now it's beyond your control. How do we control that?
I don't have that answer for you. I, I don't know. I, I mean, other than putting precautions in to safeguard the community, I don't, I don't know what else to do. That's why I'm here. You know, I've had the dog for 11 years, you know, there's been three incidents, one of them I firmly believe was not my dog's fault, the second one allegedly bit slash jumped, I don't know, and the third one is my fault because the dog got out. I'm taking ownership for the third one, biting the dog. You know, to me, I'm here for the dog bite with the, the owner here, not for the previous, to be honest with you. That's how I feel, and that's why I'm trying to solve this.
Yeah, I, I think what, what the officer's saying is it's a culmination of, of all the events that have brought us here today, not just one single event.
Have you ever tried dog training?
Yes.
Doesn't work?
He's an 11-year-old, 12-year-old stubborn old dog. To be honest with you, he probably only has about a year here. Like I said, I've had dogs my whole life. If he's around two years from now, I'd be shocked. I mean, he's big, he's getting older, there's tumor growths, I mean, he's not going to be around forever, so.
No, I just thought maybe dog training, they could train him when he.
When I, when I rescued him from the MSPCA, he was certified, trained, all that stuff, and then I trained him, I had behaviorist dogs, you name it, having a, and paid hundreds, hundreds, hundreds of dollars. Here we are, 11 years later.
Would you be, just reading again from chapter 1, 140, which spells out some of the things that we can, we can do here. Chapter 140, section 157. Would you be agreeable to, that the dog be confined to the premises or the keeper of the dog provided, however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run upon the premises? And then, just explains how it's done.
Yeah.
That when the dog, when, when, when removed from the premises of the owner or premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. I don't think either one of those are unreasonable. And an increase in insurance, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in the amount not less than $100,000, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage or injury to persons, domestic animals or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional. I, I don't see any of three of those that are, that are unreasonable to, do you?
The only one I'm concerned about is giving insurance, everything else I'm agreeable to. The other one is, it's not for a lack of effort, sir. I mean, I, if you, if you knew the amount of insurance companies I've spoken to, sort of in the past two years, you would probably be shocked. It's just, no one insures dogs anymore, especially a dog that's over 50 pounds, so.
Probably a dog, a dog that bit two people and attacked another dog.
Well put.
So, I mean, I, like I said, like I said before, we can, we can, we can use these as a conditions, but it's not up to go out and get the insurance, but it's up to you to find it. But I think in order to protect anybody going to your house, anybody walking by the house, I, I think that would be remiss if we didn't require that.
I just can't promise you I can get that, that's all. I don't want to sit here and lie to you and say I'm going to go get it. You know, I, I will try again, but I can assure you, sir. That's all I can tell you.
All right, I, I don't have any further questions.
Did, did you want to?
Yeah. Would you have a problem? You sounded like you admitted by the dog got loose and bit the other dog.
Yeah.
Would you have a problem paying the vet bill at least to try and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Within, I mean, within due time, I mean, I had a kid ready to check tomorrow, but give me 30 days, yeah, I'll get you a check.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be us, I mean, probably, I don't know how they do it.
I don't know how they do it, but.
The homeowner, I don't know, I mean, I'm just saying, that's all, you know, that's one satisfying the public, you know what I'm saying? And I get what you're saying, I mean, if you're willing to make those agreements and you're willing to say to us, listen, I will do my best and all my power to try and get insurance for this dog, we put it in, we put it in writing for tonight and if it doesn't go and we're back here again, we're back here again, at least you're going to go out and do the, you know, your due diligence, you can't get it, you can't get it, at least you're trying, that's all I'm saying, you know what I mean? And what else more can we ask? If you're trying and, and the police wanted the dog to be muzzled and we're meeting three of these criterias, then we should be able to move forward and you try to change the interior of your house a little bit and the habits of how the.
I mean, I'm satisfied with, I'm satisfied with the police recommended, I'm willing to do that. I mean, anything more is, I mean, I might kick back a little bit, to be honest with you, you know.
We're not looking, I'm not looking to crucify anyone, believe me.
No, no, I mean, whoever, whoever the police officer's recommendations are, and me paying the vet bills.
Right.
Then I, I personally, I think that's fair, you know?
All I try to do is find common ground.
I hear you.
And I'm not trying to crucify you, and I'm trying to, you know, find common ground, and I think we're almost there. So I think we're doing good, and I think we can get to that point, we're good.
Yes.
So I just want to clarify something. What the board votes, if you have a disagree, I mean, what the board votes is final, your option would be to appeal it to Haveldister Court, so just keep that in mind.
So whether they decide I can appeal?
You can appeal to the court, yes. But if they impose insurance on you.
Yeah.
And that's part of their agreement, then you could certainly appeal that, but, but they have the right to set any parameters that they wish.
Would you like to make a motion on that behalf?
I'll, I'll put in, I'll put in a formal motion. That we require that the, the dog owner, that the dog be confined under C, to, that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area on the premises of the owner or the keeper, owner or keeper, provided further that such dog or dog run shall have a secured roof and if such enclosure has no floor, secured to the sides thereof, the sides shall be embedded into the ground not less than two feet. And provided further that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. And under three, that when the dog is removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. And that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in the amount not less than $100,000, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage or injury to persons, domestic animals or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional of the dog, or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued, provided however, that if a policy of insurance is issued, the owner or keeper shall produce such policy upon request of the hearing authority adjusted to District Court and provided further that if the policy has, has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall provide proof of efforts to obtain such insurance. And I'll, I'll put, that's, I'll make that in a form of a motion.
Ed, can I ask a question? Are you going to include that?
Absolutely.
Because you did mention that, so I just want to make sure that will be part of your motion.
And, and also like to add in there to reimburse the town of Groveland for the police officer's four days off, or whatever, three days that he was injured, the town shouldn't be responsible for that.
Seems excessive, sir. Seems excessive.
And I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Seems excessive.
So, just so we're all understanding each other and put it back in, in English, what the motion is, is basically to hold you unreckonable under chapter 140, section 157 of the nuisance or dangerous dog order for medial action, appeal violation of order under, let me see, that would be subsection B and paragraphs two, three.
Excuse me, excuse me, C, so it's subsection C.
Oh, you're right, it is C.
Two, three and four.
Two, three and four. And that the owner reimburse the.
Mrs. Parati.
Mrs. Parati for the medical expenses caused by the dog attack and that the town be reimbursed for the time. Did I get this all right?
Yes, that was the motion.
That all, did I get that all correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and under discussion, I'd just like to ask the witness and.
We haven't got there yet.
And Lieutenant McDonald.
So we need, just.
If you're satisfied with those recommendations.
Well, we have a motion.
And I, can I clarify the motion? So the reimbursement amount is 294.92 is what the doctor, the veterinary bill is, so I just want to make, I will put that amount in the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second on that specific motion? Seeing as none of the motion is defeated, somebody else like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion a little bit more simple.
And quicker?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That you pay the vet bill in 30 days, the dog is always leased while outside regardless of the hour, always muzzled while outside regardless of the hour, and within 90 days you've got a 15 by 15 chain link enclosure.
So we have a motion, second.
Can you just repeat the, what was the dimensions of that?
15 by 15.
15 by 15.
And that was in, within 15 days?
90.
90 days.
90 days on the enclosure?
Yeah. 30 days on payment for the vet bill, and then, I, I don't think the insurance is possible. I think, I believe you that you researched that. It's really to not only protect other people, but to protect yourself, which you're opening yourself up for litigation if you don't have it, so you understand that. So making you go find insurance, that's not possible.
It's a waste of time.
It's a waste of time.
Done for a year and a half.
So that's why I didn't include that. So mine is a little bit more simpler, it covers what I think the police were asking for, as far as protection of the public, it covers her vet bill, what she was asking for, and it also provides some steps forward, I think will help with the 15 by 15 enclosure and also, like we talked about before, changing the habits as much as you can in your household, the way you come in, when you come in, you know, with the way you interact with the dog outside of your property.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Dog signs, you know, just to be left.
Yeah, we can add that.
And there was one of the dog signs and there was one, hold on. What'd you just say, you said a point at the end?
Changing your habits?
Habits, yeah. Did you wear that out?
How are you going to enforce that?
No, no, I mean, just ask, you know, change the habits of the, the, the family habits.
And it'll take some time, obviously, but I think once you get into a groove that your habits are there, it'll be just like second nature and you won't have to think about it. And it'd be better for everybody.
Are you agreeable to that?
I am, yes.
Okay. Is, is, are you?
The only, I guess we can discuss this later.
Are you making the second then?
No, I just asked him to make a friendly amendment, but.
So you're seconding my amendment, amendment now? The friendly amendment?
I asked you if you can, yeah.
Yes, that's been added, so now you're seconding.
Right.
Okay.
So you seconded the motion, Bill?
Right, yeah.
With the addition. I will read the motion, but I just, so I'll read the motion, then you can tell me if you seconded it.
Please do.
That Mrs. Sharon Parati be, be reimbursed $294.92 for her veterinary bill within 30 days, the dog is always leased while outside, the dog is always muzzled while outside, within 90 days you install a 15 by 15 enclosure for the dog, make every effort to change your household habits with regards to the dog and add signage to your property warning of a dog.
Right. Can we have discussion?
You have to, there has to be a second first.
Oh.
If someone wants a second before discussion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second now, is there any further discussion on the matter?
Who seconded it?
Bill seconded it.
Bill has not said I seconded the motion, did you second the motion? But then you didn't, okay, so we went back to no, okay, so you're seconding the motion.
Yeah.
The only thing that, that I worry about, and it's not, it's just I don't want to have things come back to the town again, if this dog sounds to me like it's an aggressive dog, and it sounds to me like if you put this dog into a 15 by 15 enclosure, he's in a bark all the time and probably become, and become a nuisance to the neighbors, that's the only thing that, that's the only reason.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying to keep the dog in there 24/7, I'm saying if you want to let him out for an hour or two so he can, you know, play, go do his business and that kind of stuff without you having to be on a leash all the time.
Okay, you're just saying for the interim.
Oh, without the owner having to be home.
Right, okay.
Totally 100% in contact, you can let him go out and.
Yeah, I just didn't want the dog to go out there and start a nuisance.
No, I'm not saying leave the dog out there for 12 hours a day, that's, that's not a good dog owner.
Would a lead suffice though, like a tether, I don't, I mean, does that suffice though? If he's on a 300-pound lead in a choke chain, would that suffice though?
That, I think that would suffice, but the, the, the problem comes back to is you have to use it.
Oh, I have, that's not, the, the problem at hand is, is when the dog's been not tied up.
Mm-hmm.
And the one, like the one time unfortunately with the, the small dog, the other one was the garage.
But that would also mean that if you, if we decide that you could use the lead instead, which obviously would be a less expensive option.
Yeah.
The dog would have to be muzzled while on the lead.
I'd rather do that, I think.
I'm okay with that.
I just, if I put him in a pen, he's just going to bark nonstop, I guarantee it.
But I would also say that if you're going to put him on a lead, he can't be left just to be on the lead outside by himself.
No.
So he'd have to be muzzled and supervised for the time he's on the lead by somebody and a help.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Bill?
All right.
So you're removing the 15 by 15 enclosure from your motion?
I will remove that, add a, what kind, 300-pound lead? Is that what that, that was in the?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a 300-pound lead.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Minimal tensile strength.
Yeah, the 300-pound lead also to be muzzled at the same time.
How many feet do you want it? Do you want a 30, you want a 40?
Whatever your property provides, I mean, if it's 20 feet, 30 feet, I don't, oh, I mean, if it's twenty feet, thirty feet, I don't, oh, you mean outside of the...
How long do you want that lead to be?
Oh, I mean, for the runner, probably fifteen, twenty feet.
I think he's talking about a chain on the ground, I think you're thinking of a lead going over there. I would say no more than thirty feet, because you're gonna get yourself in trouble if someone walks on the house and you get the dog...
I have a, like, a thirty or forty now, and you can't, if you pull it...
You don't want too long, because if someone comes over your property, he goes around, before you know it, we have another problem, so. And those, not, not to, not to get into your business, but I get what you're saying about it. I can tell this, this how this dog is, and I've seen them, and I know what you're saying, I've had dogs. But it's not a lot of money for the enclosure, fifteen by, you can buy him a tractor supply. But I truly think, from hearing what I've heard, that dogs aren't going there, and the neighbors are gonna be calling, because the dog's in a bark all the time. And that's not that I'm trying to, I think Selectman Watson was probably doing what the paperwork is right, but I get what's gonna happen. You're gonna, we're gonna be in here again with a dog complaint and, or a barking. So that's the only reason I'm saying what I'm saying.
Can you reread that motion?
I don't know what your motion is on that.
Holy...
We're just knocking up the fifteen by fifteen.
I, I, I mean, have everything else, I don't know what this one you want me to do.
And we take out the fifteen by fifteen pen, and replace it with a thirty-foot lead with a minimal tensile strength of three hundred pounds. Am I got this all right?
Yes.
But Mike's also saying muzzled while on the lead, right? On the lead, okay.
Yeah, and supervised.
Okay, but, but, so, but when was the lead being used? Every time the dog's outside? I guess I don't understand what the purpose of using a lead is, or when that's to be used.
So he's doing his business, I think, to assume it.
Right, but what's, when is, when are they supposed to be using this lead?
Anytime he's outside, if he's not, if he's not leashed. If he's not leashed, then he's on the lead.
Okay.
Is that clear?
There's mud.
Clear.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, no, I, I just respectfully, I, I have to vote against it, I don't think it's strong enough. And that's, that's all my comments.
Okay, I, 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 I'm kinda siding with Selectman Watson here. I, I would like to add a friendly amendment. Add that the owner provide proof that every reasonable effort to obtain insurance has been made. You know, letters from insurance companies denying your request to obtain insurance on the dog. If we could have that, then we, I'd feel more comfortable knowing that you have exhausted every avenue you could to find insurance in the amount that Selectman Watson would, would, would like, but were just unable to obtain it, because no insurance company would sell it to you. Is that beyond, is that unreasonable? I mean, I, I know you've tried.
It's, it's, it's a waste of time, but if that appeases the board, I'll do it. It, I'm just telling you, I'm, I'm gonna call up insurance companies, and I'm gonna ask for letterhead, and they're gonna say no, and then, whatever you guys...
That seems like an easy provision. You're good, then you're good.
How many do you want?
Three.
Do you want three?
Three, Bill?
If we get three, at least we know you made an honest effort to try. I know the situation you're in, you probably can't get it. If your dog's bitten anybody before, he's a huge liability to anybody that wants some insurance, and they're not gonna...
If we know this already, then why are we gonna waste my time?
Because it's proof to us that you've, that you've tried, you've made what they call in article four, a reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued. It just shows us that...
He's just three phone calls.
You, you've, you've tried, at least, to make that effort. And if something were to happen, at least, we feel, I feel a lot better that I've asked that you try to obtain this insurance.
That seems like it's an easy checkmark to make.
At the end of the day, I think it costs you a lot less than a fifteen by fifteen pen, or option seven, which is euthanizing the dog, which nobody wants to do. We want you to keep your dog, we want your family to be happy. That's certainly what I want. I just want everybody to be on the same page. And I think it satisfies, it'll satisfy, it'll go a long way to satisfying Selectman Watson's demand that you have a hundred thousand dollar insurance, that if you provide proof that you've made every reasonable effort and can obtain it, well, as you said, can't get blood from a stone, right?
So, do I accept that friendly amendment? Is that what you put there? Is that my motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, we have a full motion on the board. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor of the motion, oh, we'll need a roll call, correct? Selectman Watson?
No.
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Wood?
Yes.
And I am also in the affirmative. Thank you so much for your time, hope your dog is, is better.
Pleasure.
So I would just clarify how he is to pay for the vet bill. I don't know if it should come here and we give it to her. If you'd like to have him pay her directly, you should clarify.
What is, what does she want? Is, do you have a preference?
For being reimbursed.
Do you want her to pay you directly? Do you want her to pay the, the town, and then we'll distribute to you, does it matter?
It doesn't really matter to me, I don't know what the protocol is, it doesn't...
Who's already been paid?
I, I paid the bill, yeah, there, I made.
Yeah, so that's what you're reimbursing her?
Yes. Okay, that's...
Okay.
I'll go ahead.
Is my address on there?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
I'll just leave you in my box for thirty days.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So you need a motion?
So we need a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing at seven forty-three. Roll call?[1730.51]